Good evening. I'd like to call the December 12th Eden Prairie Planning Commission meeting to order. Would everybody please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on my nation, my homeland, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. First thing on the agenda tonight is to actually approve the agenda. Commissioners, does anybody have any comments on our agenda, or if not, may have a motion?
I'll move to accept the agenda as presented.
Motion's been made to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five zero. Next is to talk about the minutes of our last Planning Commission meeting held on Monday, November 14th, 2016. Does anybody have any comments about those minutes? Hearing none, can I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting on November 14th.
Motion's been made to approve the meetings of, meeting minutes of Monday, November 14th, 2016 Planning Commission meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next item on the agenda is informational meetings. I don't believe we have any this evening. So we're going to move into our one and only item on our agenda, which is a public meeting. We actually have a action for our Board of Appeals this evening. And it's for ERS Estates Lake Access and Dock issue. And the way we're going to run this meeting this evening, we're going to have city staff prepare some opening remarks for information. Then we're going to go to the appellant for comments they're willing to make. And then we are going to open it up for any public comment that people in the audience may have. After that, our commission will discuss the issue. So with that, Julie, would you give us the staff report?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, before you this evening is an appeal of staff's determination. The Planning Commission in the city code is charged with, not only its regular Planning Commission duties, but also as Board of Appeals, you receive any appeals that somebody files on a determination made by a city official. So in this particular instance, staff has issued a determination that the use of a dock at property on Beach Circle no longer has protection under non-conforming use status, and the applicant has appealed that decision. So what I'd like to do is kind of walk through the issue at hand, what led staff to make that determination, and then allow you to ask any questions that you might have of staff. So hopefully, we've got the document camera here. The properties in question are located on Beach Circle. The property at 12530 Beach Circle, as you can see, has frontage on Bryant Lake. That property, as well as the other properties on Beach Circle, was originally platted back in 1964, I believe. And in 1965, when that property was sold, it was sold with an easement on the 20 feet into the property along that boundary to allow access for what was originally this parcel and this parcel to allow access, as well as a dock to be put down on Bryant Lake. In 2006, this original parcel of 2551, or 12551, excuse me, was subdivided to create the parcel that is right on Beach, the corner of Beach Circle and Beach Road. At that time, that easement was not transferred for that new lot onto, or with the existing property. When the property was subdivided in 2006, there was mention in the staff report for that subdivision that the dock was protected under non-conforming use status because it had been under continual use. In the spring this last year, the property owner of 12551 contacted staff seeking confirmation if, in fact, that dock was still protected under non-conforming status. Staff conducted all of this research, read the information that the applicant had provided, and conferred with the city attorney, and ultimately determined that based on the language in city code that talks about the discontinuance of the use for more than one year, that it had lost its non-conforming status as a dock. Now, the easement, as I said, was put in place in the mid-'60s, and the city ordinance was changed in probably about 1996 to limit only one dock per lot. So at the time that the easement was created, two lots, or two docks, excuse me, per lot was not an issue, but in 1996, when that lot, or when the code changed, no longer were two docks per lot permissible. Thus, the conversation about the non-conforming status in 2006 with the subdivision. So the question before you this evening is whether or not the, you agree or disagree or have findings to agree or disagree with staff's determination that, in fact, the discontinuance of the use is, in fact, discontinuance of the non-conforming use as stated in city code. And with that, I turn it over to Mr. Rosso if he has any other follow-up comments.
Yes, thank you, members of the commission. The statute that's involved is Minnesota statutes 462, 357, which has provided since 2001 that a non-conforming use may be continued unless the non-conformity has been discontinued for a period of one year. City code in section 11.75 contains the same language. Now, in reading the materials, you will see there's some discussion in the appellant's attorney's letter of appeal regarding intent to abandon and citation actually to an Eden Prairie case that I'm very familiar with. At that time, in 2000, when the Hayfley case was decided, it was being decided under the code as it existed in 1999, which was prior to state law adopting the one-year discontinuance criteria. And so city statute addressed it in the fashion of an intent to abandon. That is no longer the standard by which city code measures whether a non-conforming use has expired. City code was subsequently amended in 2006, actually in 2005, September of 2005, to use the exact language that is in the state statutes. So the measure here, the criteria by which you judge this, is whether there has been a discontinuance for a year. The other matter that I'd like to address is the procedure for tonight. City code provides that the property owner here who's appealing has the right to appeal, and they've filed that properly. The commission in this case is to provide a written record of its proceedings, which is to include, under city code, the minutes, its finding, and its action. And you are supposed to adopt that within a reasonable time after tonight's hearing. So it's my advice that you follow strictly the requirements of the city code, and that instead of the motion that's in the action to vote on it tonight, that it would be more appropriate to have a vote to direct staff to prepare findings either in favor of sustaining the staff's decision, or findings in favor of overruling staff's decision. Then at its next meeting, which I believe is a reasonable period of time after following tonight's meeting, staff would bring back those written findings for you to adopt, and there'd be an order for you to adopt as part of those findings. The minutes of tonight would be there by that time. We'd have the findings and then a written order. So if there's any question about either the procedure or the historical statutory facts, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you, Mr. Rosso.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I have some additional comments. In your packet, you will find comment from a property owner that was submitted. In addition, on the table on Golden Rod, you'll find additional comments from the property owner at 12535 Beach Circle that need to be provided for the record as well.
Would you please point to that property on your map that you had on the overhead, Julie?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the information in your packet was received from the property owner at 12530. The information that is on your table, on the table, rather, in Golden Rod is for this property, 12531.
Okay. And if I may, as long as you were pointing with your pen earlier on this map, you had crossed Beach Street with your pen and pointed to the unnamed parcel on the north side of Beach Circle at one time. Not that 2006 parcel, but across the cul-de-sac, that one right there. Did you mean to?
No, I did not. I'm sorry.
Okay.
That was...
Yeah, it just might have been wandering, and I just wanted to make sure.
It was, I apologize. I apologize.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you for those remarks. We'll go to the appellant now and ask that if you wish to speak to our board, you approach the podium, give us your name and address.
Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission, my name is Peter Beck, and I'm here tonight on behalf of Dr. Elmer Salavich. And you have a letter from me making this appeal from the staff determination. I apologize, you don't have anything from me addressing the points in the city attorney's letter, but that letter was just made available to us late Friday afternoon, so we did not have a chance to prepare a response. Familiar with the issues in that letter, though, and I do disagree very strongly with those conclusions. This is a deeded property right. In our letter, you saw the deeds both from 1964 and subsequently when Dr. Salavich bought the property, specifically reserving that easement and the right to the dock. The city just simply cannot take this property right away. This will have an impact of probably hundreds of thousands of dollars on the value of the property. Here tonight is a potential buyer of this property, and he can state in his own words why this property is of no interest to him if it doesn't have access to and the right to a dock on the lake. It's a huge impact on the property. Also, I have to take a little bit issue with the characterization of the 2006 staff report. Julie said that the staff report said that the right to the dock for this property was there because it was under continual use. There's nothing in that staff report that says there had been a dock there continually. We don't know, but certainly in 2006, the staff didn't think that that was a relevant issue. They felt there was a right to a dock there. And at that point, the statute had changed. The code, I believe, if I understood what the city attorney just said, had changed. So when Dr. Salavich bought this property and talked to the city about it, he, and as far as he knew everyone, the advice he was getting, and as far as he knew, this was the city's position, was there was a right to that dock. The city's current position is not that that right has expired because it took Dr. Salavich so long to get this property renovated and ready for resale. And Dr. Salavich will explain to the commission in his own words why that happened, but the city's position is just one year. So if at any given summer, the owner of that property, for whatever reason, prior owner had been in bad health, if she and her family was growing and gone, if she hadn't put a dock in, city's position would have been you couldn't put it in the next year. This just isn't reasonable. It's not, and if that is sustained, our position would be that's a taking of a significant property right that would have to be compensated. So that's, again, I apologize for not being able to put that in writing to you and document a little more thoroughly, but that's where I think the law is. But more importantly is this is, you know, the property owner in the city who purchased this property has invested a lot of money in it to make it very, hopefully, very valuable piece of property in the city, and he's been told that a significant part of that value is gone because while he was investing in it and not living there and not needing a dock, he didn't put a dock in and out every year. So with that, tonight, I provided in advance Dr. Salavich's statement. I'd like you to hear that from him. He will read it, he will supplement it here and there. We talked about this a little bit before the meeting. I do think it's important that you hear his perspective of it, if you don't mind taking some time this evening for that. His realtor, Heather Hanson, is here, and she can explain efforts to market this property, why this is such an important issue. We're not here just spoiling for a fight. We're here because this is really taking all the value out of the property if this is upheld. And I mentioned that the prospective buyer is also here. I only met him for a moment. If he chooses to speak, he can tell you in his words what he thinks the impact of this decision would be. So that's what I have for a moment. I'll turn it over to Dr. Salavich unless there are any questions for me. And of course, at any point in the evening, if you have questions for me, or Heather, or Dr. Salavich, please let us know.
Thank you, Mr. Beck. Do any commissioners have immediate questions for Mr. Beck before he sits down? Thank you.
Thank you.
Elmer? Would you state your name and address for us, please?
Elmer Robert Salavich. I'd like to read you a statement that I prepared, and then I'll add something to the statement. I am the sole owner of ERS Development, which is the sole owner of 12551 Beach Circle, which is legally described as Lot 2, Block 1, ERS Estates. I purchased Lot 11, I'm sorry, I purchased Lot 10, Block 1, The Cove, including the home located at 12551 Beach Circle in 2007 for $952,000, $937. The D2 Lot 10, Block 1, The Cove included a non-exclusive easement over the southeasterly 20 feet of Lot 8, Block 1, The Cove, for the purpose of access to Bryant Lake, Bryant Long Lake, and for purposes of maintaining a boat dock on the shore thereof. Following the purchase of Lot 10, Block 1, I met with the City of Eden Prairie Planning Commission and talked to them about the use of the dock allowed. I told the personnel that the, I had purchased the home at 12251 and wanted to build a dock on the easement that I had, and discussed this at length with them. And I told them that, I told the personnel that I didn't want to build a dock at that time, but in preparation for building of the dock, I wanted to find out what the requirements were for the size of the dock, et cetera. And I was told that the, in terms of the size of the dock and other requirements, that it was similar to the building of a dock for any dock in the lake in the state of Minnesota. And that when I was ready to build the dock, that I should come back to them, and they would help me in deciding about the size, et cetera, of the dock. I then began renovating the house that I had purchased. I purchased the house from my wife's, wife, her husband, and she built the house at 12251 Beach Circle. And her husband died, Kurt Turner, died, and his wife, Barb Turner, then continued living on the house until she became ill. She had trouble with financial resources and turned to me to see if I could help her in some way, and she suggested that I buy the house from her, which I did. I then encountered a realtor who made a study of the house and its value, and then paid him the amount of the value of the house that he felt was current at that time. She subsequently became ill and died. It was my intention at the time that I would probably move into the house, and then, following that decision, my wife subsequently died. And as a result of that, I felt that the house was too large for me to move into the house myself. I then decided that I would recondition the house and then put it on the market for sale. During that period of time, there was a considerable length of time during which all this happened, and there were for a number of reasons. Number one, I had difficulty with financing of the house. I became ill. I developed cancer, had surgery for the cancer, and elected not to proceed with any chemotherapy. I therefore encountered an architect to look at the house because the house was in bad need of repair and to make some suggestions on how the house could be remodeled so I could recoup my investment that I put into the house. I did not agree with some of the suggestions that he had, was, I was disappointed, and so I had to then hire a second architect. I obtained a builder for the, builder to remodel the house, and because he was so busy, he then subbed it out to another person, another builder, and further looking at the work that the person was doing, I felt was unsatisfactory. And so then I had to obtain another builder to finish the building of the house. I state this because these were the reasons that there was such a delay in completely It never occurred to me that failing to put a dock in the lake each year while the property was vacant, that's the property at 12551, would result in the loss of the deed of right to access the lake and maintain a dock on the shore thereof. It was always my belief that I owned the right, had a legal right as the owner of the property to install a dock whenever I wanted to, and that the right to access the lake and install a dock was a property right that went along with the purchase of the property. No one told me that you had to have a dock in the property, docking rights you had within a certain length of time. Certainly, when I went to the city of Eden Prairie and talked to them, there was no mention about the need to put in a dock within a certain length, within a certain period of time. And the suggestion, not the suggestion, but what I was told was that when you're ready to put in the dock, you come back and see us, and we'll help you in determining the size of the dock, et cetera. I've been unable to sell my property because of the uncertainty regarding the right to As I mentioned earlier, when I purchased this property, I relied on the lake access and the dock right guaranteed by the deed. To date, I have invested $1,198,662 in the property to renovate the home. And I did this solely in reliance on the lake access and the dock. The renovation of the home was ongoing from 2006 to 2016, at which time I began efforts to sell the property. There was no one living on the property at that time, and therefore, I didn't want to incur any additional costs of putting in a dock each spring and fall, and removing in the fall. I've never intended to abandon or give up the right to access or maintain a dock on the lake, which I felt were property rights guaranteed in my deed and confirmed by the The total cost to me in renovating the property to date has been $2,000, $2,118,154. The purchase price that I have on purchase of the dock at this time is $952,937. I'm looking at a loss of over $1 million. The loss, the exact figure is $1,163,154. At no time, when I consulted Eden Prairie about use of the dock, was ever told that I had a time limit on which I had to place the dock in the lake. At no time was I told by anyone until recently. I was led to believe that I had a right to build a dock at any time because my purchase
Is there anything else you'd like to add, Mr. Salavich?
I don't think so.
Well, thank you very much for your words. We appreciate the explanation. Commissioners, do you have anything for Mr. Salavich before we have another speaker? Thank you. You may be seated. Anybody else in the audience like to speak? When you approach the podium, if you could give us your name and address, we'd appreciate that.
Sure. My name is Heather Hanson. I live at 5090 Kelsey Terrace in Edina. I am representing Dr. Salavich in the sale of his property at 12551 Beach Circle. I've been working with Dr. Salavich for a little over a year in preparing that property for sale. We listed back last, earlier this year, January, I don't remember the exact date, at 995, $995,000. We've reduced the price to 950. We had a flurry of interest when we first listed earlier this year, a lot of questions about the access allowable and use of dock on the lake. That was a big interest for the value of this property. We did receive an offer from an interested party. The offer was contingent on confirming that we, that the property came with the right to access the lake and put in a dock with a boat lift. That is the history, and we are waiting for a favorable ruling from the city. Any questions for me?
That offer is standing right now, you're saying?
I believe so. It's not an active offer at the moment. They've withdrawn because of the time period going through the process of addressing the city.
You said you had a reduction in interest level?
No, reduction in price.
A reduction in price? Was there a reduction in the inquiry by the public on purchasing the property?
We took a price reduction mid-spring because we weren't getting a lot of inquiry in February and March. So we took a price reduction, and that was when we started getting interest. I think I was just at the wrong, sometimes $25,000 can make a world of difference.
Thank you, Ms. Hanson.
Thank you.
Appreciate your words. Anybody else in the audience?
Mr. Chair and members of the commission, that's all that we had on the behalf of the appellant. Just to maybe clarify, answer to the last question, it has not been marketed without the dock rights at this point.
Okay, that's what I was getting at.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So no, it's always been marketed as having the dock rights. When I was asked if that was the case, I advised that we'd get that confirmed, and that's how we got into this process. You know, until June of this year, neither Dr. Salavich nor any of his advisors were aware that the city would now take the position that there were no dock rights.
So with the dock rights, as it's been marketed, the value that has been placed on it for sale is 953, is that?
Yes, within a thousand or two of that, yes. That's my understanding. Again, if the buyer chooses to speak, he could speak for himself in terms of what he offered and why, but that's my understanding. It's listed at about $950,000 with the lake access and dock rights.
Has there been a market study with this new information on the question of nonconforming status? Has there been a new market study performed on the value without?
We haven't asked Heather to reevaluate and advise Dr. Salavich on what he would, on what she would recommend he list it if it didn't have dock rights. So that's why we are feeling is we do have the dock rights and we'll be able to establish that eventually. But no, she hasn't been asked to come up with a recommended listing price without the dock rights. Among other reasons, as Dr. Salavich just mentioned, he's going to lose over a million dollars even if he can sell it at the 950 with the dock rights.
Is there any idea as to the percentage reduction that would be attributed to the loss of dock rates, meaning it's not anything that would be letoral in nature? It's not specifically letoral in nature, but would there be an idea that you'd be able to throw out, or maybe the real estate agent would be able to just kind of humor me here?
Yeah, Heather could come back up and take a crack at that. I asked her sort of the same question, and that was whether there have been offers for this, the second lot, the new lot, you know, that was created in 2006 that clearly doesn't have dock rights. We're not asserting any dock rights for that. And she has not even had an offer on that property.
What is that? It's the property that's right next to it, I'm assuming, correct? The one that was subdivided?
Correct, the one that was called 2006 parcel.
Yeah. What is that one presently listed at?
I have that. Heather has it too, but I asked her that. It's listed at $325,000 and has, as I said, has had no offers. My understand, Heather looked it up on the county site, and the county has it at $308,000.
Oh, the county assessed value is 308?
For that lot, yes.
What is the county assessed value on the subject property?
Well, they have not reassessed it since improvements have been completed. So that, so pre-completion of the house, $550,600. So it, again, we wouldn't be here but for the fact we believe this is a several hundred thousand dollar issue. Whether that's 100, 200, 300, I don't know. But it isn't, it's enough to make a difference. And of course, on the real issue here, it explains why we're here. It doesn't really go to the issue of how it should be decided. Again, just to be clear, we're not disagreeing that there was a period of at least a year in there when there was no dock. We just disagree that that fact allows the city to take that right away. We think the fact that there wasn't a dock there for a year can be evidence of no intent to maintain the right to the dock. But we think that in order to take the right away, that property owner has to intentionally have abandoned it or given up on it. And I know, I read the city attorney's letter Friday. I disagree with him. I think the cases and the courts require more than just the passage of a year to take that kind of a property right away. I think the year can be relevant if it shows that the property owner didn't intend to have a dock. But in this case, there's nothing that would indicate that, that there was no need for a dock because he was renovating it, he wasn't living in it. If, in fact, there hadn't been a dock in there even before he bought it, it was because the homeowner was sick and her kids were gone. We don't know. But the fact that he made that investment in it in reliance on what he had been told in 2006 that he had the dock rights, the fact that it's marketed that way, I think all these things show that there is no intent to give up that right, and we do think that's relevant.
The letter that you are referencing, that you received Friday, is that the same letter that I've got in my packet? So it's dated June 29th of this year, and it was received by you on Friday?
That's correct. And the city attorney explained to me why that was, and I'm not here to criticize anybody for the fact that we got it just on Friday. I'm just here to say that that's why I haven't been able to get you a written response to it. I appreciate the call from him to give me the heads up on why we just got it on Friday. But again, I do think that the law is that this property right can't be taken unless there's an intent to give it up. And there isn't that in this case.
If you might humor me as to why the time delay?
Well, I won't humor you. I'll tell you why. It was a confidential letter to the staff, giving them my opinion with respect to a proposed decision that the staff was considering making. It was marked attorney-client confidential and was sent to staff to assist them in making the decision. They make the decision, I don't. Staff made that decision and informed the property owner, Mr. Beck. When they were preparing the packet, Ms. Kleema asked me if she could include the letter in the packet, i.e., and we essentially, she didn't put it in those terms, waived the attorney-client privilege with respect to this advice. I said, yes, you can. So she asked me to take the attorney-client privilege language off of the letter, and I deliberately left the same date on it. I wasn't going to kid anybody about the date I wrote the letter. And so that's why it went in the packet the way it did. Otherwise, what we would have had is we would have given you the confidential letter. You could discuss it at an open meeting, but the letter would still be private, and that's a really awkward thing. And I have no reason at the point after which the staff made the decision to keep the opinion private. And so I concurred with staff in allowing the commission to have that in their packet. And then I, when I heard Mr. Beck called today to tell Julie he hadn't seen that letter, I called him and explained what I just said to you, and we had a good conversation about that.
Again, I'm not here to make that the issue. I've known it for many, many years. I'm not, that's not the issue. The issue is whether or not it makes a difference that Dr. Salavich needs and never intended to give up that dock right.
A question maybe to Mr. Rosso on that point. Could you just explain one more time why intent is not relevant here?
Intent is not relevant because intent was the provision in the prior city code that you needed to have an intent to abandon. That's why the city lost the Hayfley case in 2000 was the court determined that there was not, that we had not proved an intent to abandon. The property owner in that case had a single-family home that had been used as a group home for more than eight children, so it had duplex multifamily status. The group home went away, the property owner tried to sell it, tried to sell it as a single family, tried to sell it as a lot of things, did not have another multifamily use of it. And at the time of the lawsuit, was actively advertising it as a single family. We said that evidenced an intent to abandon the multifamily use, and the court said, no, that in of itself was not enough. There's a case in Mr. Beck's opinion that, or letter to you, that addresses a case saying that, that he cites that actually was decided the opposite way. And the case says that intent is not the issue any longer, it is whether there was a discontinuance.
Okay, I'll tell you what, just let's get back on course here with taking comment, and then we'll kind of wrap that up. This is an official public hearing, but, so we may call people back to the podium to answer some questions. But let's at least make sure we get everybody in the audience that wants to speak. I think everybody that you had planned on speaking, Mr. Beck, did. So just one last call out to anybody else. Is there anybody else?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Beck. We appreciate that.
I've been alluded to, so I thought I would come forward.
Very good. If you would state your name and address.
Sure. My name is Mark Eckstein, currently reside 7213 Menardo Lane in Edina.
Is it Eckstein?
Eckstein.
Eckstein?
E C K.
E C K. Thank you.
You're welcome. I don't have a tremendous amount to add, only to affirm that I am the prospective buyer. And we had reviewed the property back, probably near when it was first listed, in the winter, when there was still snow on the ground, and followed it. And after there was the price reduction that Heather alluded to, my family and I did make an offer, and that was around April. And we kept the offer open with this contingency for clarification on the use of a dock and a boat lift. And when it was not clarified and the time lapsed on the offer, we did withdraw. So I am only a sample of one, but I would affirm from my family's perspective that there is a much different value for the property with or without the ability to have a boat dock. And happy to answer questions from my perspective, but that's the context is the unnamed prospective
Mr. Eckstein, can I ask you, what prompted you to ask that question about the continuance of the boat dock opportunity?
I'm a frequent user of Bryant Lake through the public access. It's a great water sports lake. And so over the years, I've probably been on it for 15 years or so. So I now have several friends that live on the lake, and I'm familiar with where there are other docks that have multi-access to it. So as I was interested in the house, I asked the residents of the lake for their perspective and clarification. And that was the suggestion, that I clarify the dock from their perspective. They hadn't seen one there for a period of time. So that was enough for me to prompt, and it is a significant purchase for our family, so we just wanted to make sure that there was absolute clarity of its use.
Thank you.
Yep.
Appreciate your comments.
Quick question. Would it be fair to say that you would not have looked at that parcel or made an offer on that, a contingent offer on that parcel had there not been the dock opportunity?
I would not have. It's been beautifully finished now. It is a nice property, but the primary reason for us that we would be interested is for the use of the lake. And so at the current price range, I know I would not.
Thank you. Yep. Is there anybody else that would like to speak?
My name is Bruce Peridis, and I did submit an email that ended up in your packet towards the back. And I'm the owner of the property 12530 Beach Circle. If you had that plat map, that would be easy to explain. And so the easement actually runs along the southerly 20 feet of my property. It's interesting, the last time I was in this chamber was in 2006 when Dr. Salavich bought the property and subdivided it. And he subdivided the property with the intention to market the additional lot, the 206 parcel that's shown here, with the easement. So it wasn't clear to anybody whether that easement would go to a third property, because it's a non-exclusive easement that goes to the benefit of 12551 property, which is the one we're talking about right now. It also goes to the benefit of 12550, which is the property that doesn't have an address on it. So when it was originally platted, there were two properties that had this non-exclusive easement for a dock along this 20 feet. So in 2006, when this was subdivided, Dr. Salavich assumed that he would create a third piece of property that would benefit from this easement. We neighbors were already crowded. We neighbors were already crowded, shall we say, with boats and docks. And so the idea of adding a third one brought us to this committee and made some arguments and failed. The reason there is no easement associated with that subdivided parcel is because we had to pay Dr. Salavich to settle a dispute with regard to that third easement. So I don't know if his figures represented the considerable sum we had to pay him to rescind that easement. But I just wanted to fill in that blank as to why that parcel that was subdivided doesn't have an easement. That was settled, and we paid him some money. So, and the property has been in various stages of destruction and construction for no less than 10 years. It's unfortunate that Dr. Salavich bought the property at the top of the market, and he's been struggling with it, having invested too much money to begin with. But it has been a mess for a decade. We made several informal overtures to purchase that property from him along the way, and it was never met with any acceptance to even get into negotiations with regard to it. Dr. Salavich often said that he had invested too much money to abandon it at this point. So the other piece of property, 12550, the one that doesn't have an address on that, you know, we're talking about the abandonment of the easement by Dr. Salavich, but 12550 also abandoned this easement more than a decade ago. They continued to live in their property and did not use it at all. The other property owned a dock and had a lift on the property, but the last time was at least 10 years ago. It was such a mess that my neighbor and I had the dock and lift hauled away from our property because they had left the dock in the ice, and it got crunched and was a mess. And they left it abandoned on our property for a couple of years. So I remember well when it was gone, and it was at least 10 years ago, never to be reinstalled. So this adjacent, this property that also abandoned the easement at 112550 ended up in foreclosure over a number of years. And a foreclosure auction occurred this spring, and I purchased the property with the intention to, at the very least, control what was occurring on the easement. At that time, I was not aware of the provision regarding the abandonment of a non-conforming use, resulting in then the loss of that non-conforming use. When Dr. Salavich finally went through his remodel and listed the property for sale, I think within the month that it was listed, I approached first his realtor and then he to really have a conversation, to sit down about the easement and the proper use of that easement. And they seemed somewhat reluctant to sit down and talk. I can understand, because, you know, I wanted less, he wanted more, of course. But, and even I met his prospective buyer on walking my dog and just encouraged him also to get some clarification on this easement, because it had been such a mess over the years when it was used, and it had been abandoned for at least a decade. I support the staff's decision, obviously. Even though I own a piece of property now that also has the right to that easement, I would gladly have that easement gone and suffer some financial loss in the resale, because my intention is to, in fact, raise that property, which is going on right now, because it was a mess, and resell that lot for new construction. So it's just, it's an unfortunate situation for Dr. Salavich, you know. But that easement was abandoned by both property owners for the last decade, and the third lot was purchased by us to be abandoned. Any questions?
Yes, Commissioner Wookiee?
When you say abandon the easement, does that mean discontinued the use of the dock opportunity by the other, by your parcel that you control and then the parcel next to you that you just recently purchased? Or do you mean quit claiming through some legal measure and recording the easement on 12550?
Well, the subdivided property was actually legally eliminated. So when Dr. Salavich subdivided and claimed the benefit for that third parcel for the easement, the settlement where we paid him money resulted in the removal of that easement from the deed.
And that property that removed from the deed was which one again?
206 parcel.
Okay, 206. I'm trying to get, maybe we can keep that up on the screen, so I can keep my head around all this.
And the 12550 is the property that I've recently purchased, and it's my intention to, I would abandon that easement also.
So you would remove the easement from the deed as well?
Just to make it clear, my hope is that you sustain the staff decision. If you don't, then what I do with that easement is an open question.
Maybe you can help me out with the differences in the definitions of abandon and discontinue?
Abandoned requires an intention under the law to release your rights, to, you have a right to do something, but you choose not to. And, for instance, an easement, such as the easement that we're talking about. If an easement went unused for a long period of time, the property owner on whose property the easement is located could bring the quiet title action to say they've abandoned it, they haven't used it, therefore it no longer exists. So that's different than the legislature putting a time in it to take out the subjective, is there an intent to abandon? Because that's very fact-specific, and you need lots of testimony regarding what was your true intent. So the difference is between objective and subjective. I would like to clarify that, one, we're not talking about the easement being discontinued in this discussion. We're talking about the use of the dock. The city staff's decision does not say that the easement is discontinued. If you put the graphic back up, I marked in red, brought with me tonight the graphic so you could see, you know, it's roughly to scale, but not exact. That's the 20-foot wide. If you decided, if you decided that the non-conformity was discontinued because it had not been used for over a year, the easement benefiting 12551 to walk from their lot, cross Beach Circle, and down that 20 feet to the lake, to swim in the lake, to bring a boat up from the lake and hop on the boat and go out on and enjoy the lake, that easement would continue. Your decision has no effect upon the easement being continued. The property owner may, on his own, contest whether or not the easement has been abandoned because of non-use over a period of time. But that's, the city should not be involved in that issue, and you are not involved in that issue tonight.
Thank you for clarifying that.
I apologize for using the wrong term.
Thank you, Mr. Paradis. Appreciate your comments. One last opportunity for public to stand up. A gentleman raised his hand first here in the first row.
Hi, my name is David Steen. I live at 6741 Beach Road, and I've lived there since 1991. On this map, my lot is the one that says Beach Road. Now, Dr. Salavich has told a very tragic story tonight, and I really feel bad for him. And I am not in favor or against what he is proposing, but I thought I could add some information to help you make a decision on his appeal. I have a dock that meets, exactly meets, the city requirements for size and length of a dock. And so that I did not infringe on property rights of my neighbor on the north or my neighbor on the south, I use rail systems that come out of the lake for my pontoon boat, my bass boat. I'm a very, very heavy user of the lake, practically out there fishing every day in the summer. My neighbor to the south has a substantial dock that conforms with the city requirements. And, not sure I can use the last name here, so I'll use first name, Bruce, who lives at the 12530, has a substantial dock that meets the city requirements. His neighbor to the south has a substantial dock that meets the city requirements. And if you look at the angles of the lot, there is not much room between the dock at 12530 and the lot to the south. There's not much room in there when you have multiple boats for those two homeowners. And it was my understanding that, oh, and also, my son and I owned a house at 6473 Beach Road, and we sold it in February, but we got variances for the dock there because of the angle of the lots. And I was told at that time, you needed a 15-foot, oh, let's see, what do you call the thing where you need the room between the property line?
Setback.
Setback, from the property line. If there's a 20-foot spread, there is no way that they can legally meet those requirements. So at a minimum, you'd need a variance to put a dock in, so you didn't infringe on the property rights of either side. That's my only point. So that's all I have to say. Any questions?
Mr. Steen, could you just rearticulate your opening statement? Do you in fact have a boat lift that's offshore?
No, no, a rail system. Rail where the boats sit up on shore, and with a remote control, you can take the boat down and into the lake.
Okay. So it touches the shoreline, and then it goes into the water?
Yeah, the boats sit up on the shore, so you don't infringe on the property rights of either neighbor on the sides.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. I did see one other hand.
My name is Laura Hemler.
Could you spell your last name for us, Laura?
I reside at 6941 Beach Road. And I'm grateful I came tonight. I've learned a lot about the history. Most of my questions have been answered. And I rise to say that I would like you to sustain the staff's decision, and mostly because of something the city attorney said within the first few moments of this meeting, where he talked about the state law and the city code now being unified with the express goal of one dock per lot. And that was the reason, that's how I interpret it, that this code and this law and this 12-month period are all moving toward a one dock per lot standard. And so for that reason, I'm supporting the staff's initial decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hemler. Appreciate that. Last call. Mr. Beck?
Mr. Chair, would I have the opportunity to just respond to a couple of things from the testimony since I was here?
You may go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify, in 2006, Dr. Paradis did not challenge that staff report decision that there was not a right to another dock. And as the city attorney clarified, the difference between the right to a dock and the easement, what Mr. Paradise purchased with respect to that, I thought I think is called the 2006 lot on the diagram, was the easement right. It wasn't, so, again, to make that distinction.
Okay.
The other thing that's new news to us is that the dock that was there, if I understood the testimony correctly, serving Dr. Salavich's lot, was taken out, not by the prior owner and not by Dr. Salavich, but by Mr. Paradise and his neighbor. So I'm wondering if the city attorney has an opinion on whether, if the discontinuance is the result of a neighboring property owner taking the dock out, if that will still have the effect of depriving this property owner of their rights to the dock. I think that's, to me, that's a very significant fact that I didn't know, and I think it is very relevant. If that dock, if the period of, if the use of that dock discontinued because someone else took it out, I don't see how that discontinuance can be a ground for taking that property right from the property owner. So that's what I have. And just to confirm, Mr. Paradise's testimony about Dr. Salavich and he meeting, I think Heather was actually at that meeting too, to see if there could be some kind of an arrangement worked out for the use of the easement. I actually was asked by Dr. Salavich and Heather to prepare a little outline of what maybe could or couldn't be in that agreement. So there was that kind of meeting, and it was an effort. And I wasn't at the meeting, but it wasn't successful, as was reported. That's all I had that related to what was said since I've been up here last.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Why don't you wait until our commission has a chance to digest everything that we've heard, and we may offer an opportunity to come back to you if we have questions. Thank you. All right, commission, we've heard a lot of testimony. I think there's a variety of avenues. Maybe we want to pursue some assertions made by a few of the people that were at the podium, as well as the city council, or council to my left. my left. If anybody doesn't have any specific questions right now, I think I'm going to try and maybe boil down where I think we're going to go.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to clarify something if I could have snapped. I'm looking at this letter of March 10, 2006, and it's stating in there, just a couple of things that are starting to bother me a little bit. Right in there specifically states that this dock may continue. Okay. Now, I understand that things have changed, and that as the code is, has the homeowner ever been notified during this 10 years of rehabilitation that there's a clock on this at all? Anybody notify him? Because if he's in a rehabilitation stage, there's been a lot of permits pulled on that property, and I'm just kind of curious where that's at. Can you clarify?
I do not, in direct answer, I do not believe the property owner was ever notified. The city does not do inspections of this type and usually reacts on a complaint-made basis. That's how most non-conformities are discovered, is a property owner complains, and it's discovered. Keep in mind that the code was amended in September of 2005. The property was purchased in November of 2005 by Mr. Salovic, and the property was subdivided in March 2006. So the code went into effect also in September of 2005, before the purchase. At the time of the subdivision and the writing of the staff report, there would not have been, there was not, a year in between the adoption of that standard and when the statement was made that the dock could be continued. Now, if you wanted to fault the staff member at the time, I wouldn't to say, and oh, by the way, you have to continue to use it, and oh, by the way, you have to continue to follow all the other city rules and regulations. I mean, I just don't think staff takes on that burden.
But what concerns me about that response, though, is that how would the homeowner know? You know, when something changes like that, is it reasonable to assume that the homeowner knows that there's a clock ticking on that? And that's just a question I'm looking at right now. Because I'm just thinking, in my case, if I was in that scenario, I would base myself upon the information I have in hand, whether it's my warranty deed, the way I purchased the property, my previous conversations with planning, the city in general, and I don't know how you would know of a non-conforming nature on that dock just ending unless someone informed them.
Right. The adoption of an ordinance modification amendment requires a public notice be published, and the law presumes that that is notice to the public. So the situation would be similar too, and I understand the struggle with that concept, I do. Situation is similar too, and Mr. Beck refers to it, it's a deeded right. Well, if the deed had said, "I deed you this property with the right to build a three-story commercial building," would we, as a city, be obligated to allow them to build a three-story commercial building, even if the lot had been zoned commercial at the time and the city rezoned it? So the same analogy here, the rules were changed, how are you supposed to know about the rules being changed? It's through doing your, the law puts the burden on the property owner to do their due diligence. But I understand the struggle with the question, and it's a fair question.
So I was going to classify this discussion really as that framing the duty to notify and the duty to discover on the appellant's behalf about the information, because clearly there was a grave misunderstanding over the years about what the property could do. And so, that's kind of where my mind is going, is to establish, was there a duty to notify on anybody's behalf? And then, along the way, as the property was purchased, was there a duty to discover, either through the due diligence you spoke of, an appraisal, a title company, a Realtor, people who do this sort of thing for expensive lots? Where does that duty fall? So, from the standpoint of our city's duty, if you would just rearticulate, I think you did pretty good already, but could you rearticulate our duty to notify, if there is any duty to notify?
There is a duty on the city to publish notice of proposed amendments to the city code, because all of those are made by a public hearing. So a published notice is made in the official newspaper, and with respect to text changes such as that. So that's a text change, a change to the text, the language of the code, there would have been a notice published in the newspaper, and that satisfies both state law and constitutional requirements for due process. That's a little different from a notice of a change to the zoning of a particular property. In that case, there's also the published notice, and you have lots of familiarity with that with respect to your hearings, as well as a notice to property owners within 500 feet or 300 feet. And those property owners get a mailed notice to them. When it's a text change, you don't send a letter out to every property owner, the law doesn't require that.
Okay, so if you were one of maybe a number of properties within the city who were affected by this, there was no letter that went out to each property owner saying this law is now in effect?
That's correct.
Okay. Just public notice, that's correct. Commissioner Freiberg, I'm sorry, were you about to add something to that?
Well, I understand what you're saying on that, Mr. Roscoe, but I'm not agreeing with it as far as from just a common sense. I do understand what you're saying as far as legality, but it just seems to be a tough standard in this case.
I have a different sort of question.
Commissioner Higgins?
I'm not sure it follows with what you're out on about our discussion, but it's still something that's, something I feel like I don't know, and I don't know if anyone in the audience knows either. It appears that the properties that could have and may have used the access and the docks as provided earlier before some of these changes have come about over the years may not have done that. In other words, I'm wondering if the Turners, when they owned the property and some of the other circumstances that the other adjacent areas were, were the docks all out there in the same period of time, or coincidentally? I mean, that everybody was active, or everybody wasn't active at all, or that there were some property owners, as some of you have testified this evening, that were using docks of various kinds or lifts for their boats? I'm puzzled, I'm puzzled, for instance, that the Turner property, did they ever have a dock that anyone is aware of, either staff here at the city or people in the neighborhood?
I could answer your question if you'd like.
That would be fine.
You may address the commission if you would step up to the podium, please.
We've lived at our property for about 25 or 6 years. And so, when we moved in, the Turners were in that property, the property in question. And then another neighbor was in the other lot that had the non-exclusive easement. And as I recall, there was a dock in its spot, but there was one pontoon boat, and I believe that belonged to the other neighbor, not the Turners, because the Turners, even when we moved in, they were quite elderly. And so, when we moved in, there was a dock and a pontoon boat that was tied to that. And then, when the neighbors that used that pontoon boat sold the property, again, not the Turner property, they kept that dock in place and had a boat and lift up until about 10 years ago. And just to clarify, we didn't remove that dock from the lake, we removed that dock from our property, because they had brought it up on our property, and the easement provided for no storage. And we appealed to that property owner for months to remove it, it was during the summer, and they didn't. So, we had it hauled away from the land, just as a point of clarification.
As a follow-up to that, there's a word in the easement description, maintaining the non-exclusive easement for the purpose of access to Brian's Long Lake and for the purpose of maintaining a dock on the shore thereof. Do we want to read into any weight of that word, maintaining, that verb, that the action to maintain? Is there, to Mr. Paradise's point, a lack of maintenance? Could that influence our discussion at all?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I don't believe so. There is an area here that's property owner to property owner rights, and that would fall in that category in terms of the interpretation of the extent of use of that easement. We're talking about a dock being allowed on the property as a non-conforming use. And so, I have not undertaken to analyze the language, because I think that's a private property interest, just as it's a private property interest as to, well, I won't even venture what the issues could be between the property owners with respect to one dock on the property and how they use it. That's between them, that's not your issue.
Okay.
So if the decision, if the code had read as it does, as it did in 2000 with intent to abandon, and I had, was sitting here today, 16 years following my defeat in the Haley case, and knowing how a court interpreted abandoned, I would have issued an opinion not stating, yes, it's been abandoned, or no, it's not been abandoned, but giving clear instruction on what you needed to find in order to abandon. And these would have been instructions to the staff. In order for you to determine that it's abandoned, here's what's necessary to show, because it wouldn't be my role to be the decision-maker and make findings affect of that type. But, you know, and that's the difference, and I think that's probably a public policy reason behind the statute, that it's subjective rather than subjective.
Okay, all right. So, so far, factually speaking, the city of Eden Prairie has determined that multiple docks on one property are not encouraged, they're discouraged. The state of Minnesota has defined and specifically veered away from the determination of abandonment and used the word discontinuation instead. We've adopted and embraced that definition in our own ordinance statutes.
That's correct. And that applies not in the dock section, so it applies generally in the statute to all non-conformities.
All non-conforming uses. Okay, okay. So the city has interests in eventually ridding ourselves of non-conforming uses through the vehicle of discontinuation. Is that an appropriate statement?
That would be correct, yes, that when brought to its attention or when it becomes aware of a discontinuation of a non-conforming use, that's the basis upon which a non-conforming use can be legally required to cease.
Okay, and those city interests were publicly made available via a public notice?
Yes.
Which is appropriate and ordinary in these cases?
Yes, it's the required method.
Okay. Thank you. Does anyone want to add to this duty of notification topic before we move on to maybe this duty to discover topic? Okay. Not seeing any. Let's just explore that avenue for a moment about the duty to discover. I know we have real estate professional in the room, but I am neither an appraiser nor a Realtor, nor a member of a title company, but I do know that when property gets bought and sold, those processes happen, and due diligence is taken on by the buyer under most circumstances. And so, within our own commission here, I'd like maybe some discussion on that, and if anybody can offer some wisdom, so that I can feel better that discovery was done or not done by choice.
Maybe I'll take a crack at it.
Okay.
Certainly, the duty to discover a new fact that would implicate or otherwise impede the opportunity of the property's full value and fruition would lie upon the buyer, but also in my mind, it would also be a duty to notify by the seller or the seller's agent that a circumstance has now changed during the period of time that it was marketed, or there was a purchase agreement signed and agreed upon to the closing. They still have a disclosure requirements, and maybe if Mr. Rosso, if there's any other, anything to add to that, that's my crack at it, I guess.
No, I think that's...
So it almost sounds like if there was a lapse of notification and discovery at the purchasing of the property this most recent time, it was, could be construed, that both parties would have some sort of requirement there?
Okay.
I don't know if that helps our discussion at all.
Yeah, yeah. Hence my line of questioning to Mr. Eckstein, the potential buyer of the property, as to what triggered his curiosity about the continuance of the right to put a dock in. His curiosity led to this, as opposed to a real estate professional's opinion during a due diligence period, like an appraiser or a Realtor.
If I could assist with that for a second, we represent another community that's really a lake community, and I've done a lot of work for them, and these issues come up in spades there. And my experience is that lake owners and people who want to be property owners on a lake are very aware of dock rights and dock issues, because of the very kinds of conflicts you've heard about tonight in terms of when the dock goes this way because the lots aren't square, because the lake isn't square, which way does the dock go, what about a dock coming this way? That's not the city's issue. Once it gets out in the lake, that's a private property issue and a county issue with respect to navigation, but not a city issue. So my experience is that the reason, I think it was reasonable and to be expected that a purchaser would inquire about that, because people who are knowledgeable about uses of lakes understand that this is an issue.
Okay. So, we're going to dial back the clock theoretically to 2007 or 2008, and while you personally wouldn't be on our city staff at that time if the phone was to ring, and the property owner called you up and said, "I'm thinking about this issue, just want to make sure that my rights are intact," or had another level of inquiry. Does planning staff take on that burden of answering that kind of question, and would there have been the research to disclose this risk to them, that maybe a year had gone by where maybe they weren't using that? Or is that something that, once it's public notice, you don't, it doesn't fall under that purview?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, with regard to the question about non-conformities, as Mr. Rosso spoke to, the non-conforming language that was amended in 2005 addresses all non-conformities, not limited specifically to docks. So on any given day or week, we may get a question about a non-conforming use, and And as a part of that, the non-conforming section in our city code is relatively short compared to others. It's a paragraph or two. And as staff, we are able to communicate and educate the caller as to what triggers the discontinu, or what would trigger the discontinuance of a non-conforming use. There's a few provisions that, one talks about discontinuance for a year or more, another provision talks about if it is damaged by fire or other peril, talks about how and when it can be replaced. But staff routinely will provide that education if someone calls and says, "X use is on my lot. Am I allowed to continue that or expand it?" We routinely provide that education.
Okay. So, as stated by the appellant, he feels as though nobody notified him, which is an action that he may feel so someone had a duty to, and we already covered that. So, back in 2006, what could have prevented this miscommunication or lack of understanding? What perhaps could the landowner done to better understand his rights and responsibilities?
Mr. Chairmembers of the Commission, as Mr. Russell stated, at the time that the code had changed, and then the property was sold, and then the subdivision application came in, and there was the discussion about non-conforming status, a year had not passed.
Right.
And one could even argue that because the property was sold in November, and the 2005, and the property was subdivided in March 2006, that's not typical dock weather in Minnesota, so there wouldn't have been an opportunity for a dock to be installed. Now, had staff received a question in 2007 or 2008, our response as a part of that research would have been, "Has a dock been in use on that property?" And the burden lies on the property owner to prove that that dock has been in use, or any non-conforming use for that matter. The burden of proof is on the property owner to establish that the non-conforming use has remained in play.
Thank you. Commissioners?
If I may, on something, the burden of proof on the property owner. What constitutes using or continued use of a dock? Just out of curiosity. I guess that you have to have a boat tied to it, or you use it as fishing, or you step out there one hour of one day in a three hundred, out of 365 days to enjoy the view. Is that considered use?
If there had been a dock on that shore for any period of time during the year, that would have been a use of the property for a dock. I've addressed that issue in depth in the other community I mentioned. Those, and so, it's not anyone going out with a stopwatch to say, "You need to be there for two hours." It's not that type of, it's, was there a dock there? At any point in time? And as Ms. Kleeman says, there's months in Minnesota where there won't be a dock. And the year takes that into account.
On that specific question?
No, just in general. All right, well, let's attempt to get our arms around this, then. Maybe we can just share amongst ourselves where we stand on this so far, but in the interest, then, of establishing some findings, so that when we get to the point of making a motion one way or the other, we can direct staff to document and prepare those findings accordingly for consensus and approval at our next meeting. Does anybody wish to go first?
Question. Are we tasked with preparing the findings tonight? Is that...
As I understand, our charge is to, yes, articulate our findings narratively, and then via the minutes and directive to staff, they will formalize those findings for our subsequent approval. Do I understand that correct?
Yes. If in the course of your discussion, you articulate specific matters that you think are findings, that is entirely appropriate and very helpful. If you articulate more generally, that I'm in agreement with the staff decision for all the reasons stated in the report, we will take the report and prepare findings based upon what's in there for your review of the written findings and modification at the next meeting. So, this won't be the only time you have an opportunity to do that, but it is very helpful to have you articulate at this point if you have matters that you would like to see reflected in the findings either way. If you want to say, if the motion is, "I support preparation of findings to overrule the staff's decision based upon what I find is the facts," and then you say, "Whatever those are, we will be taking notes," and that would be included in the findings. On the other hand, if you say, "I want to sustain the staff's decision because of all the reasons stated in the staff report," or, "And these additional matters, what I've heard tonight," and being specific about that, again, both of those are very helpful.
Thanks for the clarification.
Would staff be able to, or would we be able to legally have findings for sustaining and findings for overruling presented at the next meeting?
If the, yes. The commission can direct that findings be prepared both ways. And those members who wish to support findings to sustain the decision should articulate reasons for sustaining. And if there are some who favor overruling the decision, then again, it'd be very helpful if you articulate reasons for overruling and bring those back because, and I think the question comes out of the intent, "I want to see it on paper, I want to think about it, and really make a deliberate decision based upon what I see in front of me in writing." That's entirely legitimate to ask for that.
That specifically, but also, there's, you know, for other members, that we may have a completely different body, or almost 90% different, theoretically could have 90% different, or 80% different body next meeting, too. And they are not a part of this conversation, so they would be stuck with, "Well, findings for one way," and they may be thinking a different way. So, doing that for them, too.
We are one body.
Well, they're coming back with new findings, right? Next meeting?
The findings that we tend to group together now.
Then they'll come back to...
And then they reword them and put them together.
Okay. Maybe I didn't understand it. Okay.
Okay. So, if I just advance your theory further, are you suggesting that if the five members of this commission who are present this evening are not present to vote at the next planning commission meeting, does that somehow dilute or reject the ability of this board to...
No, not any, no. No.
You're not suggesting that?
No.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Just to be clear. Anybody want to take a stab? Not seeing a volunteer. I'm going to, I'm going to try and summarize my opinion. I think this is a very miss, unfortunate, rather, series of events that led to this. I am hearing that there are specific charges by the state of Minnesota and the City of Eden Prairie to discourage the use of two docks on one property. And the interest of the city has been articulated to eliminate two docks from one property. Therefore, the loss of property value, in fact, I find, occurred at the point at which the city established that policy. The trigger for when that would happen on a property-by-property basis is based on the landowner's decision to continue or discontinue his right. But the eventuality of the non-conforming use has been described in the city interest of their policy. I've, based on the definitions that we've heard, explained to us about abandonment and discontinuation, and the ordinary opportunities that land buyers and sellers have to shake down the due diligence during a purchase opportunity, while I think it's unfortunate, those duties do lie with the people who purchase property. So, I am, I am in favor of sustaining and upholding the determination of staff about the non-conforming status of the dock based upon those findings. I'd be interested in everybody else's opinion.
I'd be happy to go. I support the staff decision as well. It's certainly an unfortunate situation, but the fact is, the rules changed, and, you know, the law required continued use, and that didn't occur. There wasn't even a dock there. There's still access to the property based on this going forward. And I think there's certainly a negative impact to Dr. Salvich, and that is unfortunate. But there's other neighbors that are impacted by this, too, and have been, I think, for some time, based on how that property has or hasn't been used. So, I think the law is pretty clear, and I think the city followed the requirements of publication, and I would support, based on what's written, the staff recommendation.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak their piece or establish findings or offer an opinion?
I have only one other comment, otherwise, I agree with both of the finding areas. Both of the finding areas that the two other members have just mentioned, I too concur with. The only other part that I am mindful of, but I don't know if it even fits into a finding description at all, but it occurs to me that, at least in this instance, where property owners have access to the water body on which they are adjacent, or not maybe directly adjacent, but through an easement or whatever the means are, that those are longstanding relationships to a body that is a very lively part of the environment they live in, and they're mindful of it. On the other hand, it seems as if despite the long period of time, the property perhaps may be held in any circumstance, but when a property is held for a longer period of time, it really becomes more pressing or more pertinent to the interest of a buyer, as well as to someone who invests in that property for improvement, to find out as much as possible on a continuing basis, particularly if a sale is contemplated, or the interest in looking into the sale of the property. To make sure that everything that is necessary to the interests of the owner or of the neighbor involved, or maybe not even thinking they're involved, but they may turn out to be, is somehow at least put out there, or something in the finding, just to make note of, those things seem to be relevant, usually after it's not necessarily going to help. Or at least in this instance, it didn't help. The interests of those who, or the person who has been redeveloping and subdividing and doing a lot of the work to try to create an investment and a profit from that that was reasonable and certainly has been somewhat hard and a major challenge to continue over the period of time. Not to say the least of which is, there were other elements that had nothing to do with that, that really came into play at this point in time. And I don't know what, that there are really specific keys that you can have in place to make sure all of these parts of the story are known before things get to a point where they can't be called back to the way they had been, or what. But it just seems as if there's something in there that needs to be said. And I don't know quite how to come at it. Maybe some of my other commission members would know. But it just is something that I'm hearing from all this discussion.
Anyone else wish to, or you don't have to?
Well, I just, I want to just clarify what my position is on it. I have had, and I still do have, a hard time going along with, and while it is the legal process itself, the notice, the, I still have a hard time that, over that 10-year period, there was no communication still with the homeowner. With that said, again, understanding that state law says you only have to publish and stuff, that, you know, sometimes we take that a little light. I just believe that we put it out there, "Hey, that's enough." And in this case, I just believe it really wasn't enough, that a person should have been notified, "What's it take? Another 49-cent stamp?" Whatever it takes. People have to be listened to on it. And, you know, the city had, in my view, 10 years, 10 years to communicate, and it's just not sitting right with me. So, I would vote that it would be overturned.
Commissioner Woodgate?
Well, I'm certainly, I can appreciate all sides here, both sustaining and overruling. I would be leaning towards an overturn or an overrule finding, and a couple, several reasons, trying to articulate them, and I may not be as well-versed in the legal angle of it, but I'll try to put out my thoughts. The easement, in my mind, has been memorialized, and I know we're not talking about the easement, but it's been memorialized over the succession since 1964 to present day, with it being specifically languaged on the title transfer at every closing, as well, on this property, as well as on several other properties, on this, on Beach Circle, on this cove. That easement, in my mind, translates to the rights of the holder of the easement. The easement's written for the benefit of the person who holds it. And the reason for this easement is maintaining a boat dock on the shore itself. Now, we've got the state statute that, the intent of the state statute is to limit the intrusiveness of multiple docks per property on our Minnesota lakes, and I understand that, and can appreciate that. This easement held by a non-litoral property has access to, I would say, common sense would dictate, it also has a right to that lake. Thereby, it has the capability of utilizing the full potential of the one dock per property. If you've got another property that jointly has an easement on the same, they too have that right. Now, what's the most prudent and rational way to go about it would be a really nice big dock. But not all, that isn't always attainable, because property owners change, and they're sold and bought. So, when I think about the easement rights, I think about not the individual property owners, although they're... owners, although they, they each have their own agendas, I think about the property itself and its future value and potential. And that future value and potential is maximized with the easements in full effect and the access and dock capability on the lake. This comes into my second finding, which is the value of the property itself, and the value of the adjacent properties around them. The removal of the easement, it sounds, from a marketing standpoint, would depreciate the maximization of that value by a significant amount of money. And that depreciation usually happens on other sides of streets. You have a street that is parallel-running with the shoreline, you've got one side of the shore has litoral property, the other side of the shore is inland property, and you can see a divide specifically how a property is, especially how property is valued, when you go to market. Different figure that's used when you work with shoreline property than it is with inland property. And so, you've got the cul-de-sac, that it's, it sounds as though, as properties changed and people were purchasing and people were selling the properties themselves, the properties still have kept that easement right and that access intact to maximize the value of that cul-de-sac. And, so I would challenge staff to present the findings in a more articulate and legal way than I can describe, based upon those two, well, I guess those three, those three points that I had.
As you can see, this is not a cut-and-dry case. All right, well, we have five of us here, and we are charged to make a motion to either uphold the determination or to overturn staff's determination and to direct staff to prepare findings accordingly. Since we have feelings on both sides of the issue, I, I believe that staff's been taking some notes on, on those, those findings, so we just ought to be careful about a motion that's being made. I, I may do roll call instead of votes all at the same time, just so we can count votes properly?
If, if I could give some direction, again, as, as I tried to articulate in the beginning, wouldn't be taking a vote on yea or nay, yes or no, approve or disapprove the staff, but a motion to direct preparation of findings in support of staff decision, or a motion to direct preparation of findings, overruling staff's decision. And then you can, whichever one is made first, you take a vote on it, and if it passes, that's what passes, if it fails, then the next motion. So you could have a motion to approve, and it gets a two, three vote, it doesn't pass, so then there has to be another motion.
Right. Okay. Right. We cannot have a motion for findings of both sides in the one motion? Or do we have to do each individually?
You, you could ask staff to prepare alternative findings for your consideration at the next meeting, yes. If that's the will of the commission, you could, that could be a third alternative.
I'm not sure I followed that. Would you say that again?
Well, Mr. Whitkey had asked previously whether we could bring back findings in favor and findings against.
Mm-hmm.
Findings to uphold the decision...
Mm-hmm.
And findings to overturn the decision.
Mm-hmm.
And I have appeared before council before with alternative findings for a council, usually a council, to consider and decide which one they will adopt. And Mr. Whitkey is asking, can the motion be to bring back findings in the alternative? A set of findings that upholds the decision and a set of findings that overturns the decision? And, and the answer to that is yes. If that motion was made and passed, we could bring back those findings, and at the next meeting, the commission would be required to choose one.
Kiki McCann downhill.
Well, the, you know, the, the yes and, the ordinance is set up to provide for the preparation of findings so that there is a clear record, so that, you know, you could adjourn, and we go back in the back room, I've done that, too, years ago, go back in the back room and prepare findings and type them up and bring them out, and, but you don't get as good a product...
Right.
...in that situation. And so, in order to, for fairness to everybody, to know exactly what the findings are, so if there's an appeal by either side, that, that there is something definite, that they know exactly what the decision is, it's a due process issue.
Before there's a motion made, would that be something that everyone else would like to consider?
Well, what I'm hearing is that, in absence thereof, if we make a motion and approve something to direct staff to prepare findings to either uphold or overturn, those are the only findings that will be returned to us at the next meeting. The, the, the report won't include findings of opposing view?
That's, that's correct. The findings would, would be, if you made a motion to overturn the staff decision based upon the following findings that have been articulated, that's what we would bring back. Now, that's subject to a vote at the next meeting, that doesn't mean that that passes. You would think it would, if it, if it got enough votes to be approved at this meeting.
Okay.
That's the problem.
Yeah, yeah. Does anybody have an opinion on that? Offhand, I'm just thinking on my feet here, I'm, I'm thinking that if we deferred this body's decision until a time when, as you mentioned, there may be other people sitting in our chairs, and they don't have the benefit of hearing everything that we did today and the interaction thereof, that they may be making a decision with a different set of facts, or just lacking this experience, albeit they can, they can turn us on YouTube if they want to after this. My tendency is to make a determination here tonight because we have heard all the facts. That's my opinion. I could persuade it otherwise, but...
I agree.
That's my opinion.
I would agree with that. I think we should make a decision tonight.
Okay.
I agree.
Hearing that, would anybody want to go out on a limb and make a motion for us to consider first? Remembering that it's not in blue on our agenda, it's not the motion to uphold the determination, it's the motion to direct staff to prepare findings, either to uphold or to overturn determination of staff?
I'll make a motion to direct staff to prepare findings to sustain the staff determination.
Okay, a motion's been made to direct staff to prepare findings, to uphold the determination of the non-conforming status of a dock located at 12530 Beach Circle, serving property at 12551 Beach Circle, I see. Did I articulate that property?
Correct.
Okay, so, that motion has been made. Instead of, instead of asking for simultaneous votes, if you don't mind, I'll just do a roll call.
You need a second first.
We need a second first.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Did I hear a second?
Mark's second.
Okay. Motion's been made, second, thank you. Roll call, Commissioner Paul?
Support.
Commissioner Higgins?
Support.
Commissioner Freyberg, I'm sorry.
Return.
Okay. Commissioner Whitkey?
Return.
Commissioner Farr, yes. So, that motion passes 3-2. So is staff clear on their charge?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Closing comments to the appellant. Thank you for all of your comments, everybody in the audience. We understand the magnitude of our decision. It's been a difficult discussion, enlightening, we wish everybody the best, and feel free to follow up with us at our next meeting where this gets voted on. Thank you very much.
And would that be...
I don't know if we're having the next meeting in late December or not.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the next scheduled planning commission meeting is January 9th.
January 9th. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, moving on, I know it is getting late. Julie, do you think the planner's report is going to be long enough so that we should take a five-minute recess, or do you think we can plow through?
No, Mr. Chair, I believe we will be done in that amount of time.
Okay, thank you. We do have a, an agenda item for public hearings, there are none, so we'll move on to the planner's report. And Julie, you're going to take us through the 2017 work plan.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, presented this evening in your packet is the 2017 work plan for the planning commission. As many of you know, historically, the planning commission has not adopted a work plan because of the fact that much of your work is generated by development applications, variance applications, and the like. Other advisory commissions traditionally do adopt a work plan and have those reviewed by the city council annually. Within recent years, we have brought forward a work plan for you in the event that maybe there's a lull in development applications, but there's an opportunity then to allow education and continuation of discussions of the planning commission on relevant items that are facing you in the near future. So, for instance, in the work plan, you will see a theme of comprehensive plan discussions, as well as text amendment discussions over the course of 2017, in the event that there is not an abundance of active development applications. As you know, I believe through other conversations, the city has recently entered into a contract with a consultant to begin work on the comprehensive plan, so after the first of the year, we'll continue to see that ramp up even further, and there will be information that is brought forward for your review and consideration and comment as a part of that process. As you know, in 2016, we also brought forward several text amendments to clarify processes, streamline processes, things of that sort. We would continue to do that work in 2017 as well. So staff is looking for your approval of the 2017 work plan.
Thank you. Does anybody have any comments on the work plan?
I have, I just have one question. Number, or C in the list under roles and responsibilities to provide an opinion on whether specific proposed developments conform to principles and requirements of the comp plan and the codes, that's kind of our standard kind of context, but I, are we trying to step out on a different level than just kind of responding as we hear the information about proposed site development or other elements that touch on both of those things? I'm, I'm just not clear what you're trying to get at with C. That's different than what we've been doing.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the information that's provided on the first page of the information in your handout is essentially the city's charter or bylaws, if you will, for the planning commission. That's not a document that has changed over the course of time, that's provided for your information and for your context when looking at the tasks that are outlined in the 2017 work plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? If not, this is an item that would require a motion. I have a motion to approve the 2017 work plan from someone?
Sub move.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion's been forwarded and seconded to approve the 2017 work plan for the planning commission. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. Members' reports? Anybody have any reports? None? Continuing business? I don't think we have any, any new business.
I got, not necessarily just new business, but in light of some of the topics and discussions that we have had on the events of notices and due diligence in our current staff's predecessorship, maybe some conversations, internal conversations within the planning department and liaising with the other departments that go through DRC meetings, how to go forward to alleviate some of the concerns and some of the problems that arose that we saw on this latest public, public meeting, so we don't have the, the issues going forward.
Very good advice. Okay, thank you. If that's all, we'll move on. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Sub move.
We have a motion to, and a second to adjourn the planning commission meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Meeting adjourned.